... service to members of the public. All right, you ready? Ready to do it? Good evening, a call to order, Garrison Board of Education, regular meeting for September 4th, 2019. First order up for business is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God and within the world, with liberty and justice for all.
All y'all. All right. Okay. New little agenda item here, there's something I'm referring to as President's announcements. And these are just things I want to make sure that the public is aware of, that might be better to utter at the earlier part of the evening rather than at the end of the meeting, we actually heard so much. So, just to note, one, welcome back to everybody, and especially I wanted to welcome back all the students, all the teachers, administration's been here, and I just have to say Michael Twardy's done a fabulous job. So this may be a bit public comment, or board comment, but Twardy's been busy, so I wanted to thank him. You're probably gonna do something similar, sorry. And also just want to encourage everybody to take full advantage of the Community PISA Project opportunities, we have one here today, and we'll probably get an update on that. And I just wanted to say that the test scores have come in, and we'll be having a presentation on test scores in November, but it's not just test scores, we try to do a data presentation so that's not just putting emphasis on the New York State test results. So when I say test scores, I mean the New York State results, but we have other internal measures that provide a breadth of data for us to consume. But the early reads are very positive, we still have areas of concern, but there's a lot of kudos go around, I'm sure. So I just want to let everybody know that that's happened, and probably people will be receiving some, something in the mail soon, right?
Regarding that?
Scores of individual students, yeah? Okay, that's.
Not already.
All right, and we have an update on board vacancies, and I wanted Courtney to take that, can we take that, Courtney?
Yes, we have, we received a number of interested, letters from interested parties wanting to, willing to serve on the board. We have set aside some time in the next two weeks to meet with the prospective candidates informally, just to have a chance to have a sit-down, get to know each other, talk about expectations, learn a little bit more about them, and then after that we'll be gathering to make our decision as a group. I don't think we have a set date as of yet exactly of when it'll be announced, but
Right, I would imagine, right, I would imagine it would have to be post all the interviews, so the first week of October would be the earliest.
Yep.
We have to have set time for deliberations, we just wanted the public to know that-
How it was working.
How it was working, the process, and the, what I consider the due diligence for such a task. Okay, Laura, you wanna take over?
Good evening, Garrison, just a few updates, I just want to say great opening to everybody. Thank you Alex and Sue, Beth, the Business Office team, the Transportation and Facilities team, the staff for being here throughout the summer. The smooth opening really is, attributes to all of the work that was happening during the summer, all of that front work, really made for a very special, exciting, and lovely day for our parents and our kids. And I want to say a special welcome to all of our new children here and our new families here in the community, and we're happy you're here. We were able to meet a couple of them during the PTA, GSEF hosted breakfast on the first day of school, so please, the doors are open, come in, say hello, tell us about you, and we will definitely find places in our, in our community where you're fit and support our kids and their learning. PISA Project update, today we mailed out our newsletter, it's a four-page newsletter to the community, so you should be getting it in a few days. We've just had a presentation this evening, it was a nice turnout of community members and parents, so thank you for being there. They asked really good questions, clarifying questions, and questions for the future as well, beyond this project, and we reminded them to come in, out and vote. We have lots of flyers and postcards, this newsletter, and e-newsletter, our website is chock-filled with updated information, as well as institutional memory, the long time that we've been working on this capital project, it's been about six years, that includes a lot of task force meetings, board meetings, facility meetings, proposals from Tetra Tech, who are architect and engineer, so there's been a lot of thought and time put into this project to sure, to ensure that it's the best for our kids and our community. And I also want to say thank you to Nancy, because she did, she rocked the website, she did a really good job of making sure that it's accessible, friendly, and informative. Also on that, remember that the voting day is September 24th, so please come out and vote, if you need more information, please come to our next two presentations, they're coffee presentations, they're posted on the website, but if you can't make those dates, please just call us, text us, email us, we'll make the time, of course, to walk you through the building if you'd like, if you need us to walk you through the presentation, we're here to support you and make sure that you're informed, to make an informed decision on voting day on September 24th. Also on September 24th, we have a blood drive, and thank you to Melissa DeBons, we'll have a blood drive, and then we're working on some other activities throughout the school day across grades, so we'll keep you posted on those. And yes, kudos to Michael Twardy.
Congratulations.
Transportation, transportation, transportation takes a skill and expertise, patience and flexibility, and knowing the community well, and being able to communicate with parents in a timely, sophisticated, informative manner, and he has been doing that non-stop. We've also, we've added Manitou as one of our stops, so that's an added route, and then we're contending we're up against the bridge construction, which we heard, word on the street, will be completed at the end of September, beginning of October. So we're asking parents just to be a little patient, we might be running behind a little bit, we are going to keep you posted as much as we can through parent notification and phone calls and alerts on the website, and if you have any questions, concerns, or great ideas on how to enhance or improve our transportation, please let us know, we're open to it, we're open to feedback, so that's what I have.
That's terrific. I would just only add that public service announcement, at the bridge, where it says pull up and stop here, you have to pull up and stop there.
Yes.
Otherwise, the light will not switch.
Our green bus was stuck there for a while.
You must stop where it says stop. Public service announcement. No, I've been stuck there a number of times, buses have been stuck there because people don't pull all the way up, anyway, just to put public service. All right, I think that's it. Oh, the only other thing with these board members, please, you know, make yourself available to the public for explaining some of the rationale for PISA Project, if you can find time to, people approach you, but if you can find time to be seen at Food Town or the farmer's market, feel free to come and feel free to be there and represent the rationale. Of course, we can't tell people how to vote, but we can tell you why they're voting, so please feel free to make that, that's a, be a good thing to do for the board.
There's that, quick, accent heatouts are also available if you are not, is available on that page.
Terrific. Okey-dokey, principals' remarks.
Good evening, everyone, I would just like to echo Laura's remarks and just welcome back, I have said this to many of the classes, it was awfully quiet throughout the summer, a lot of hard work was done, so credit to our staff, the administrative team is absolutely phenomenal, Beth, Catherine, Kathy, and Pat, you know, officers directly are tremendous help, but it's nice to hear the building as it should be, so welcome back. So, the summers, while some of our other former students were also hard at work, so Guy Sirgouen was kind enough, he is now in the process of finalizing his Eagle, his Eagle Project has successfully been completed, and you can see, he gave Laura and I a tour just to look, and this is actually the portion of the forest which actually looks out onto the West Point, and it actually is used for our Living History Program as well, so fits perfectly, and I'm sure Mr. Caliendo and the seventh graders when they head up there will be very excited to see this new addition, which is really conducive for educational purposes, so congratulations to Guy and thank you, we're always great to see our students giving back and really for, in the interest of educating our students. We had our welcome back, we had our parents, of course, as well, were in true fashion welcoming our students back, as you can see there, they're coming in, and the cougar mate is showing as well, which was well-received by many of them as well. I did actually see, so this was from our first grade, I am, I love the pun, so with the goldfish, they officially began, and as you can see, Mr. Caliendo was, this was day two, so our teachers and our students do not waste any time in terms of diving right into the learning, so it was really wonderful to see, and truly, a lot of hard work, and our kids, most importantly, are smiling, and they are happy to be here. Did want to also just say that hopefully this cover looks familiar, this was the cover of our new calendar that was sent out yesterday with the youngest, if you have more than one child, the youngest sibling, Mrs. Ricky spends the entire summer coordinating dates and events and trips and what have you to include it in, just to give you an idea, the first page of September is quite busy, you'll note the open houses, which I know later on is in there, our letter days are all there, so if anyone's wondering when they have PE or what have you, it is very well done, and each year she does a wonderful job, so thank you to her. We did also share, so last week, we actually had our first two staff days back officially, our professional learning days, so during that time, we were happy to, Laura and I were happy to share that over the summer, through a lot of hard work throughout last year, and with the board's time and effort and approval, that we now have these district priorities, which are now really focusing and aligning our work going forward, so we look forward to the opportunity, I know that we have some presentations which are scheduled to continue, give updates to the community and the board as to our progress in each of those areas, so it is truly exciting, and once again, we appreciate the support and the time. And this may look familiar, this was from the end of last year, the second-to-last day, we had said through the PBIS initiative, had the students collectively earned 60,000 points, the staff would have a lip sync, they reached that goal, the second-to-last day, so mind you, with everything that occurs at the end of a school year, all the people in this picture managed to schedule rehearsals, times, it was unbelievable, the full video is available on social media, I'd be happy to share if you'd like to see, there's also a very professionally edited version as well. So I shared this with the staff, and just, and I actually shared this out on social media once again, and I asked, what does this photo say to you, when, if you were either within the community or if you were outside of it, and interestingly enough, one of our former students responded with one word, which I thought was just words sharing with staff and with you, iconic, amongst other very nice things, so it was nice to see, this is, these are the people that I have a pleasure of working with each day, and our kids have a pleasure of having too. And just, I know we've seen this, I think it's just a nice reminder as we start the school year of just how important each of these different groups of stakeholders, students, parents, community members, Board of Education, these were all active participants in our district priorities process, we would love any opportunity for more voices and your input, so that we can really make meaningful change that's representative of what we need here in the school. And the other thing we discussed is just making sure that we are always bringing it back to the students, because they are at the center, and they are at the center for a reason. So a few upcoming events, open houses, tomorrow evening will be for elementary, and then middle school will be next Tuesday, and as was mentioned before, GSEF and PTA, they will be having their back-to-school, they had their meet and greet breakfast, they'll be having their back-to-school barbecue, which was very well-attended, well-received, the weather held out, so hopefully we'll have the same luck, Saturday the 14th. And finally, School Picture Day, which falls on a Monday, so add your reminders on your phone, Mondays are sometimes difficult to remember, so alarms and reminders help. And as always, so myself and Laura, I know we like to send our weekly updates, so I've sent some summer editions throughout the summer, so I look forward, I'll be giving a few updates of how the beginning of the school year has gone in a few days, so look for that, I will share that out as I have throughout last year.
Alex, any questions for Alex or Laura?
Look, are you doing Forest Friday, is it against the law?
Yes, yes, so we actually have a draft, and so last year we started too late in drafting those dates, because the weather turns very quickly, so we are in the process of solidifying those dates, that they don't conflict with other school-wide events and things like that, but yes. So last year, we were able to coordinate in the spring, three dates that were a little bit later in the spring, but there was absolute interest, partnering with Putnam, Northern West, Yosef Bosis, and getting up into the forest as well, so absolutely.
The more the more, right?
Yes.
The number of coffees and meetings, I think that has something to do, can you speak a little bit about the plans to have meetings in relationship to the communications priority, or part of the deal is that we want more opportunity, more opportunities for parents and teachers and staff to interact and communicate, open up channels of communication?
Yes, so as Laura referenced before, so specifically with regards to the capital projects, of course, we've coordinated a few opportunities informally, which have been very nicely attended, some good questions posed, but Laura and myself have posed that as well, just throughout the school year, to offer those opportunities to the community, of course, as you've mentioned, some of our staff have expressed interest in being part of those at times, so that is something that we will be opening up and solidifying and scheduling. I also, during the summer, I did have, and I appreciate you mentioning that, during the summer, I had, my office was open, I think it was Tuesdays for a few hours, and some of you were kind enough to schedule time if you had a concern, question, so in the same fashion, I will be setting up just appointments that can be scheduled, of course, if there's something imminent or urgent, of course, I will make the time, but on Mondays from 3:30 to 5:00, just in an effort to make sure that I'm as available and accessible as possible, that'll also be a standing time, and I'll send out and remind, and hopefully Google Calendar, make an appointment, I'll be available. Hopefully have helped, just as you had mentioned, to just increase, there, no one had complained about over-communicating, in my experience, so the more the better, and I think is our effort, so.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. All righty. Consent agenda. All right, so as it is, let's see where we go here. Yep, I'm a little, I don't have the language for it. All right, B resolved at the Board of Education, ah, there we go, I need a motion.
So moved.
One motion made by Courtney McCarthy and seconded by?
Second.
Sarah, and duly adopted, resolved at the Board of Education, Garrison approves the consent agenda items B through G. Is that correct? Thank you, thank you very much. Any questions about any of the items before we adopt the consent agenda? Where you demonstrate your excellent preparedness for the meeting.
I had a question, one question on the long-term math substitute, do you have anything to add or share about binding him, or who started?
He started, smooth start, he knows that they're competent in his, his knowledge of math, he's a, he's a new graduate, we'll support him and everyone when we can, and he's a welcome addition.
How long is he through for, it says till January 1st, is he serving that full-time period, or is that just?
Correct, yep, that's when Ms. Cartini will come back. And she'll have a little time with him so that she can, he can transition her back into school and into the group.
Just one other question, the mentors that are being approved, who are they mentoring?
Ah, the first, Jessica Van Decker is mentoring Marissa, our new speech teacher, and Lauren is continuing her work with Jennifer Kirchenheider, she, because this Kirchenheider came in January, so she went to get a full year.
And, so when we contract, do we contract a long-term substitute, is that the deal? When we, we give them a separate, we give them a contract, is that the deal?
It's a policy.
It's a policy.
Yeah, it's a long term.
Yeah, it's a three-tiered policy.
Right, right, so, but do they have to serve it out, what, I guess the question Sarah's asking is, what happens if this person gets a job loss or a full-time gig, is that just the way the market works?
Yes.
We don't have any recourse, we can't say, no, 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 agree with you.
So hopefully it's, and oftentimes we say, especially, you know, especially for a new teacher, what we can offer you, we may not be able to offer you a full-time job after this, but we can offer you recommendations, so we work with you, you work with us, you take our feedback, we will help you grow and be more efficient in your craft, and that's what we can offer. And also, it's a resume builder.
Right, and also support. Does he have someone that he can move on?
Yes, mhm.
All right, any other questions about consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, and the ayes have it, agendas, consent agenda is adopted. Okay, discussion items, turn it, turn it over to Sarah, can you run this one?
Sure, we're now doing our second reading of policy 7511, organization of students, and 7552, student gender identity.
Terrific.
Were there any changes made, there are no changes made from the last reading to the utilization of students policy, the changes to student gender identity were discussed, it was a page numbering, we made sure that it was a four-page policy, it says four pages now, and we changed some pronouns within to use they or instead of he or she, and in many things, I also like to refer to students.
Which is appropriate.
Which is appropriate for the writing, so I believe they have gone to counsel at this point?
Yeah, we've been following.
Okay.
Great.
So that's where we are.
Any questions about those policies, obviously this student gender identity is keeping with law, but also demonstrating a kind of inclusion, spirit of inclusion that guffs embraces, so.
It's also an important point, I don't know if we mentioned this last time, but it does also protect the student's privacy.
Right.
As well.
That's important.
Line put out in the, and where their protection.
Right. So gender identity has become a protected class, basically, in the state of New York, right?
Yes, and how it's handled in sports and everything is also aligned in the policies.
Okay, any questions about that?
No, at this point, later on in the agenda, we'll move to approve them.
Excellent. Just, everyone should be aware that these policies are in public, on board docs, and accessible, correct?
Most of our policies are not uploaded online, that would be a great thing for the policy committee to do later on, these are available currently because-
Yeah, I mean the ones that are up for consideration.
Yes, those are available, but they are also always available in the big blue binder that lives in Laura's office, and anyone can read the policies at any time if you wish.
Okay.
You're reading with pleasure, yeah, they are open to the public, these are not, they just haven't been.
Discussion item B, Board of Education term limits and rotating presidency, the sloppiness of this particular item, the term limits apply to the presidency, so I wanted to float to the board whether they thought it was a good idea for the president of the board to serve, well, by law and by statute, we are, in bylaw, we are elected, president of the board and vice president of the office are elected for one-year terms, okay, at which point you can always be unelected, right? But the question would be, is it, is it best practice for the board to have what many districts adopt, which is a term limit, that you can serve for two years, or like maybe two terms, right, and then it must rotate out, someone else must take on the burden for a period of time? Do you think this is a policy or a change in the bylaw that we would like to adopt?
I'd like to know more about the experience of other boards that have done that.
Well, I can speak to the, one of the many orientations I went to when I started, the first one, which was Westchester, Putnam, Bosis, it, from the survey of the room, it was a practice to rotate presidents, whether it was an informal practice that the district had adopted, or was formal in policy, for almost every district there.
On the yearly basis, or every two years, or?
It's, that seemed very, and they didn't really get into specifics, but the rationale behind it was, it's a lot of work for one person to have to do, and it helps share the burden across all the members, and it also helps to remind everyone that we all have an equal voice, all the board members have an equal voice, an equal vote, and that one person shouldn't be doing the burden of the work all the time for a long period of time, so everyone who serves should be prepared to step up and help.
I think it certainly, it will attract people that would be interested in, you know, if you're, if you're interested in serving on the board and willing to take on the president's duties, then I think it's probably, I mean, it builds a certain sense of civic engagement, right, like you're definitely gonna do it then.
James, do you think it's better to do it on a yearly basis, or every two years?
Well, we vote every year.
Yeah, I know.
I think that, I think the learning curve is probably best for two years, maybe three, but I would recommend maybe two, and we have a big board, right, so we have seven members, that's pretty big for the size of the district, but the duties are still there, and the meetings are still there, and, you know, if we can, if we, maybe we can do like 18, or maybe we can do two-year terms, or two one-year terms, and then at month 18, we could start transitioning, mentoring someone into that role, and I think that might be good. And, you know, just to be clear, it doesn't have to be the vice president, you know, it doesn't have to be-
Good.
Any, you know, it doesn't, it could, we could do it-
It could be anybody.
Could be anybody that's demonstrating interest, or we could nominate different folks for the position at some point, but, you know, I think, I think it's just a healthy thing, in academia in general, like in university level, you often, we, what we have is rotating chairs, and the, you know, you rotate the chair of the department because you don't want to exhaust the chair with administrative duty, you know, and you want to bring them back into the teaching world, and I think that might be a way of sort of thinking about it, is like, it also puts you firmly in the wheelhouse of some, with some interesting conversations, where you have to both communicate the will of the board, but also communicate back the will, or back to the board, various kinds of information, whether they be legal or whatever.
Is there a reason to pass something that makes this explicit, or if we just have an understanding that that's how we proceed?
I think we'd have to change the bylaws, right? Or we'd have to add the bylaws.
We actually looked at this policy today, because the policy committee met, we're reviewing the bylaws section, under president and vice president under election, you could just put in a sentence that says, you know, after elected, they can serve two consecutive terms, and as you pointed out last time, if it's not working for the district, you can always change the policy.
Right, you know, change the policy.
So, if it becomes a burden to the board versus a help, then there's always the ability to review again.
Yep, I just think also, it's just good, it's just good practice, because, and that's my feeling, but that's good practice. Close, what do you think, Cor?
I agree. I, yep, I really feel like I've got much to add, I agree with, with what both you and Sarah are saying, we discussed this in committee today, but I think it, it's important to change up the activity and the environment of the board by, even just simply, things are different now, of us sitting in different places, we're interacting with each other differently, so it's important to keep things moving forward, and-
Yeah, also, the president of the board is often the face of the board to the media, you know, but, and I think it's great to have other people's faces, other people's names in the newspaper and representing the board, and I think that you need enough time in this, in this particular position to learn it, of course, I'm still learning it, right, but I think too much time is no good for folks, as far as adopting policy, we would probably need to do that.
I mean, this, this represents a departure from the way things have been here for many years, and I think it's, I think it's a positive one, and I would say any name is a really good, but I think, but, you know, but let, let's just all be aware and inform the public that this is really a change from the way things have been this year.
Right, I think largely, you know, I don't, you know, I think that serving as a, serving on the board is, is a really beneficial thing for people who want to be engaged in this kind of work, it's, it's very beneficial. Serving as president is beneficial, but I think it's very important to share that responsibility, only because you don't want a de facto president, right, where if people aren't competing or nominating across the position, across, nominating each other for the position, then it becomes a de facto president, right, and that, that's probably not healthy for a organization, is my guess.
No, and my question then would be, referring it back to committee, would you like us to address it as part of a review, full review of the bylaws section, and add the language in with the rest of the-
Is this one of those questions that's not a question? Is that what we should do, Sarah?
No. We can't totally make, and we make this change, how do we? Change it, but I don't know.
What do you guys think?
I don't think it, well, I don't think it's necessary to pull it out and really push it forward, because you're in this role for a year, and we're going to have this updated by May, so by then, we should have it in place, hopefully, by the next year.
My view is that the policy committee should look at the most effective and way of dealing with the matter, it doesn't have to come forward right away, it could come forward at later times, it's not, it is important, but not urgent. It's not, it is important, but not urgent.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, great. Item C in the discussion, GUF's Howden Joint Board Retreat. So it was proposed by the president of, uh, the two presidents of the boards got together and said, you know, we enjoy this relationship with Howden, we enjoy this relationship with O'Neill. I've yet to meet with the, unfortunately, it's canceled, or the meeting with the O'Neill super, uh, president of the board was canceled due to illness, so unfortunately, we haven't gotten together, it's Ann and all this. But I did get a chance to get together with, with Jen Daly, and she thought it would be very effective for us to sort of reconfigure our relationship a little bit, so that we're doing things that are important. And one of the things that they're proposing is that we go on a retreat with Howden to adopt or consider adopting a board evaluation tool. Is that something the board is interested in doing?
I'm interested, but to clarify, it would be led by NISBA or would it?
Be led by NISBA.
Okay.
So we, we would have to, uh, we would split the cost.
Okay.
Of, of such a retreat.
So an all-day retreat or what's it?
I don't, I would imagine it's within ninety minutes to three hours, something like that, maybe, one and a half hours. I don't know. I don't know yet. I think we can commit to the spirit, but maybe, you know, take a break at some point. Yeah, so, but we do, it, it would be probably in October. Probably later in October, I hope. But they're waiting on us to confirm our interest.
Yeah.
And, uh, also look at other possibilities where superintendents are meeting to discuss superintendent-like things. And perhaps principals meeting to discuss principal-like things, with a greater articulation. I mean, it's obviously, we're just looking for ways to open up the conversation about how the districts that we have articulation agreements, you know, how, how, how we relate. And that's really, uh, you know, I can't speak for the superintendent or the principal, of course, but, you know, the, the board feels, uh, the boards feel they could find more effective ways, and the superintendent is open to having different kinds of communication, so, as well as principals. I leave it to the superintendent and the principal to work out how they might want to reengage relationships with both districts, O'Neill and Howden. In the past, we've, we've gone into their, we've gone to Howden and O'Neill, where they've come here, and we've basically had a kind of presentation about the things that they do there. You know, we know kind of what they do there, we're looking for a more meaningful time. If we're gonna spend time together, we'd like to spend more meaningful time. Not that, not hearing about the programs isn't meaningful, but we, we, we're pretty familiar with that. I think at this point, it'd be nice to have a, a deeper, more collegial relationship, so.
And we both agree we need a board evaluation.
And we both need a board evaluation tool, so it's.
Get something out of it.
Yeah, so there's something, there's an opportunity there, and we save costs if we have to do a retreat and training ourselves, so.
I would say, go ahead and, uh, we'll start working on the details for that.
Okay, terrific. Back to the non-resident tuition policy here. Sarah, what do we, we have a, can you give us an update or status on that?
Sure, um, we have to do this now.
Courtney's on the committee, right?
Yeah, so.
Laura's on the committee.
The policy committee is Courtney, Laura, myself. It's up to three board members, so if anybody else is super excited, come join us. But we have, we talked today about the policy. It is part of Section 7000, which addresses a large number of student policies. And we are still investigating a lot of what are the financial benefits particularly, and what would possibly deter us from adopting a new policy. And to be clear, our current non-resident, non, non-resident tuition policy states that we do not accept students on a tuition basis. We can change that at any time and let in anyone, you know, like. We do have to be careful that we follow the basic guidelines, that we don't discriminate based on the usual law list, and be mindful of how it would impact costs, especially with regards to special education. But we have, and we do have a tuition basis set by the state that we reviewed today.
Right. There's a Seneca Falls formula, which sets up a maximum charge, right?
Yes, would you like this?
No.
Okay. But we talked about it today, we've been talking to the lawyers about it, and I would, um, it would be my recommendation, and I think the recommendation the rest of the committee agrees, that because this policy doesn't exist on its own, it's also impacted by other policies within Section 7000 regarding residency age to ten. There's a bunch of them that sort of go hand in hand. We have a current policy that refers to educational law 32026.
Right.
Then we should discuss these all when we get to the Section 7000, to see how they impact each other, and then make a recommendation.
So the recommendation of the policy committee is to consider the NRT policy, if we are to adopt one, in relationship to the, how that policy may impact other policies within a section of the policy.
How many more times can you say policy?
And it's also, to continue the ask questions about.
I know. It's all in-esque.
We are, we have a number of other, there's a number of other factors that go into it. So we are doing that research and getting the information we need to make an informed decision, or make an informed recommendation.
Right, I mean, there's, there's, there's some definitions here. What is a resident? What is tuition? How do we determine that? What, how do we determine admission, what controls we put on things? There's a, it's not as simple as someone wants to pay, let's just open the doors. Because there's, you have to figure out, there are non-residents living in districts. Then there are, uh, out, out of districts who would like to be non-resident tuition payers, correct? So there's a lot of complication of what a resident, a qualified resident is, correct?
There, there's a lot there, and we are also, as you mentioned, looking at the St. Basil's decision. The district spent ten years litigating that, so we want to make sure we are informed as well about that process and how changing the policy would impact that. A lot has changed for both.
Who's, who's gonna take on the financial analysis of NRTs?
Well.
Do we need to have someone, we could, obviously, that, that's critical, right? I mean, that's gonna affect the.
We've been talking to, I've met with Sue to talk about what, so what are the rates? What money could we bring in from this? And then today, we talked to the lawyers, talked about what are the potential liabilities against that. And I think we're still in the process really of exploring those liabilities and seeing how, they gave us some general things. They're gonna look more into St. Basil's as to how that impacts it, if it still pertains. There was a different set of situations in two thousand and two than that case began, than there are today. So I think bringing all that information together will then help us with the financial. There will still be question about, depending on who shows up, we might not, we can't say, oh, we have five slots, we're gonna basically put out these five slots, and who comes to us at the rate we set. So we won't really be able to say, we're gonna make X number of dollars, and we might lose this much. I don't perceive that as being at all possible, but we can at least look at what could happen.
Okay, so, uh, to sort of backward frame this, they did a terrible job framing this. There was a, we, we've been petitioned by someone in a, who, who lives in Garrison, but is not in the Garrison School District to accept NRT, what they call NRT students. We, we reviewed the policy, we did a soft promise, and we were sort of lagging on that. So I feel, I feel bad that we didn't follow through with my soft promise. But it is complicated, correct?
Yeah, and I think we can say that, well, perhaps not to apologize for past actions, but we are, we are following through, we are asking all of the necessary and relevant questions, and discovering that upon looking at this, is that it is not as simple as saying, hey, you wanna pay, come on in.
Right.
And what we've certainly found going through the policy committee, that the year-long work we're doing is that changing one thing can have a domino effect and change ten other things that are almost seemingly unrelated, except that it all is through the school law. And this is something that, that falls under that. I don't, I think it's important for us to evaluate, but I don't think that there is a sense of urgency that we need to pull this one element out, as we did according to the law in terms of changing the utilization policy.
Correct.
This is something that, we're working on it, and our work will, it's gonna take us over the, the course of the year, and we're going through all of the proper procedures.
Yeah, with some of the other policies, just to be fair, some of them, Laura will break forward as really important to our students now. I think that's really important to sort of remind ourselves that we need to pay attention to those policies. And maybe those ones will come forward and go through the process before the full section review, based on what our, Laura feels our students need now, so.
When, when, just, when do you think Section 7000?
We have a schedule.
Nah, that's all right. Ballpark?
Yes. Seven thousand is, uh.
Seven thousand.
You guys are incredible.
So.
Sarah's all organized.
So seven thousand, I believe, is scheduled for, because it's a very long section.
Yeah.
For March review. The goal is to have the entire binder done by May, back to year one of the season, with a legal review. But it is, you have to look at, like, they all really do connect, Courtney really serves very well.
Well, it's, uh, it's a bugaboo.
Or just out of curiosity, if you look at, at student enrollment numbers here at GUF's over the last, yeah, five years, what's, what's the trend? I mean, are we, are we losing population, are we, are we steady?
It's been pretty steady, we did have that demographics analysis about three or four years, and that was the prediction that we sort of would ebb and flow. We have about two hundred and fifteen students right now, some families left districts, they moved on to two other states, other schools.
How close were you with last year?
Two twenty-five percent.
And the year before?
I don't know, it was much lower.
It was lower.
Two of six.
Yeah. Can we have a, we have a long, that keeps a nice list of enrollment over the years.
We've had, you know, we have fluctuations, we have.
We've had lots of tours and new enrollment registered students.
But any policy we were looking at, or looking at changing it, would make sure that it takes into consideration that we can't be taking our students to a class, or pushing it over and requiring a teacher, for example, because that costs, it's looking at language, that, how would that work? Being mindful of the students we have now, and that enrollment does fluctuate here.
One of the things that you can do in such a policy is to put in a rider that says, it's up to the superintendent's discretion in regards to impacting school, uh, teach, uh, student-teacher ratio, the size of classrooms, you can say no for a lot of reasons.
And council's been very helpful one day, it's a list of reasons based on things they've seen and would recommend to add to that policy.
And you can say yes, you know, and you can say no, and you might find different reasons they say yes demographically, and different reasons to say no, I suppose. But I think the, you know, it's, I just wanted to thank the policy committee for doing this work. It's laborious, and what you find is that one policy speaks to another, you know? Homeless laws pertaining to homelessness and residency, you know, foster care, residency, all these things are interwoven, so it is important to consider, okay? Thank you so much. All right, um, gee, presentations, Laura, do you wanna talk about, thank you, David?
Sure, David and I spoke about, um, sort of scheduling out presentations, so that we're being prepared. And then it's based on what board members would like to hear and see, as well as community and parents. So in October, we have planned special education, and that came from a few board meetings when we were doing presentations. We're like, oh, we wanna know more about special education, the process. And so we have invited our CSE Chair, Jennifer Muller, to come that evening to go, to present. She may bring some colleagues with her, um, we haven't, we haven't fully developed the plan yet. In November, we'll have the student data, just like you said earlier, not just state tests, but we do use Fanta's and Penella's assessment, STAR three sixty, anecdotal's, tech teacher observations, student work. So we'll bring all of that into a presentation to share sort of the, the larger picture of assessment and bring it down to the classroom and the students. In December, we're Dignity for All Students Act, that was also a, um, a request by, for, you know, to learn more about that procedure and how it's embedded into our, into curriculum and into the classroom. And then January twenty-second is social emotional learning updates. Last year, we had an extensive update of social emotional, included dialectic behavior, PBIS, TIS, you know, all of the acronyms. So we're gonna choose one or two at this time and bring in the rest at a later date. Just sort of say, you know, here is our baseline information, the data that we collected in September to inform the, the changes or movement and growth over the, those months until January. Also, we'll be having budget presentations when the budget season comes around. And then just another suggestion to throw out is to invite BOSE's, folks to come and speak about their services and budget. They're always willing to come, January's a good time for them to come because it's to inform the budget in May, so just a suggestion.
Did something like that, I would definitely think that it might be great for them to review the history of our services, and maybe even recommend some things that we haven't taken advantage of, that we might want to take advantage of. Like, for some reason, I never, I don't understand why you guys never had these small district orientation or retreat thing, you know, that they do. I don't know what they do, what they don't do, but, I mean, I know they do so many things. There might be something that they, like, just looking at us, said, why don't they take this service? Be interested in.
We have very close relationships with them, I think that they, they have suggested that you should be there, and let's talk about it. But I would definitely bring that to their attention.
One question, is student data in the presentation, is there a possibility of having somebody from BOSE's come and help analyze the data there, since they do that in other districts where.
They used, yeah, the RIC used to offer that, so I can reach out to them again. I know Kathy Conley, she's the one, I believe, that did the demographics. I know, it's another, she might be the devil too, so yes.
Well, BOSE's is an important aspect of what we do, right? It's an important relationship we have, so. Terrific. Any questions on presentations?
Uh, how does this work or coincide with district priority presentations? Or, and, or committee work, or, I'm trying to remember the timeframe suggested for those, for the district priorities. Obviously, social emotional is a priority, um, just how does that fit with the schedule that was laid out with that? Or is that, we're looking at this as, and that's something separate? It's, it's something separate, but it falls under the umbrellas of, of our district priorities. So social emotional, dignity, the DAS, that's all, SEL, social emotional learning. Student data is our curriculum, so we can embed that into the district priority. Special education, so for all of that, quite honestly, you know, facilities, curriculum, SEL, technology. Just, yes.
Okay, the effort is to streamline all of that, yes, because they fall into the larger umbrellas.
Okay.
Good question.
Well, uh, you know, we, we have presentations every year. Presentation, I, uh, presentations usually are generated out of some sort of demand of the calendar, some want of the board, some concern that folks may have. So what we're trying to do is plan ahead, and sort of say, okay, what kinds of questions do we have? And what kind of presentations will we need to inform us regarding the condition of the district, condition of the school, so. So.
And some of them, over time, may not require a large presentation.
Right.
Once we start gaining momentum with the, the building committee and the district priorities, we should be able to report something, and if not, we can share that as well. Over time, during each board meeting, we can say, just like you're doing with the, the board committee meetings, the updates along the way, rather than the large presentations at the end of the school year.
Right. I think that's important. I think if we keep the conversation going, that's important. So one of the ways that I think of the presentation is outlining, you know, what we do, why we do it, the status of our engagement or intervention, or whatever you wanna call it, and the status of, of what, of the initiatives that we've, whether it be professional development or curricular initiatives, are they effective? Are they leading to the goal, to the results that we want? So how are these things working out for us? So that requires a bit of analysis. So too often, I think, we get into report land, where we just wanna report out the conditions of things. Much more interested in analyzing those, the information, and generating some conclusions out of that analysis so that we can move forward, so that we're not just marking time, you know? Okay, terrific. Any other questions about presentations? Do think about presentations you would like to. Do think about presentations you would like to see. You know, Laura's completely open to facilitating and, you know...
And I also, just to your question regarding, is it aligned with the district priorities? If we're trying to align them, they may be just a little off time-wise, just because availability of staff and, and developing these presentations. They do require collaboration and time and all of that, and making sure that people are available during board meetings. So that's just sort of it too, is like, special ed, we know she's available, she's coming in in October. It does fulfill our district priorities, it speaks to our district priorities, but that's also just good for, to be there.
Okay, item F on discussion, we're talking a lot today, committee updates. Bring this to a close soon enough. Committee updates. We heard from the Policy Committee, a lot of committees are operating right now. We had a small planning committee meeting, but unfortunately, a couple of people couldn't make it. But two members were there, myself and Jocelyn, who's a community member who is volunteering her time. And we are recommending that we move toward investigating a coherence plan modeled on Croton's plan. That's something we would like the board to consider, is that the coherence plan. And then we also, we also agreed on about Jocelyn. What's the other thing we agree on? I'm blanking. Oh, yeah. So the idea here is that often in a strategic plan or this kind of a coherence plan, there are, you can, there's usually consultant involved somehow. Question is when to bring that consultant in. Jocelyn and I thought it would be really healthy for the board to go through some of this planning process by themselves, the initial phases. Not just to come up with drafts and concepts and considerations, and then have a consultant come in and facilitate that draft with the community, so that the community is getting some, you know, some sort of, something that's shaped, and that's not completely made of air. And at that point, the communities, the different constituents within the community, would provide revisions, of which the board, you know, would sort of help redraft, or the consultant would help redraft into a full-on document. So the recommendation that the Policy Committee members are putting forward to the rest of the Policy Committee and to the board is to look at coherence plans, compare coherence plans. We've looked at Crotons, we could look at others. And then the other point would be engaging the consultant at a later time. And what we're trying to do is develop strategic, a strategic plan for the school that makes sense given the size of our district and the scope of concern. That's where we're, that's where we are with that. The other committee issues I would draw attention to is that we have facilities always working on PISA, right? And then always working. And financial, finance and audit will be meeting at another time. Those are two different committees. Soon enough, they're closed. But I wanna make sure that all the board members are, the school committees are about to open up for volunteers and the community. You wanna talk about that?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, the, the building committees' charges. I don't know where they were set. Were they set by the board in the past, or were they set by the building? I know that they're...
The building, I believe.
Cause that's what we would propose, that we could get our teams together, parents, community members, staff and students, whatever, when appropriate, look at the charges and align them to the district priorities, and then share with the board.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just wanna strongly, well, I'm gonna strongly recommend, if I could dare insist, that we, you know, board members are welcome to serve on building committees. It's very important to understand the dynamics going on within the institution so that you're not blind to what's happening on the ground. I think it's just really informative to serve on a building level committee, especially it's a big one that can, you know, tolerate a board member or two, you know? So I, you know, I really think it's important for us to, you know, understand the impacts of, that the experience that people have on the ground or, you know, in the building and all the many facets. So we have, what school committees do we have?
Health and Wellness.
Yeah.
We're going to look at the education and technology and hold it under the curriculum district priority. We have, excuse me?
Environmental.
Environmental education, sort of seeing where that fits. We've, we've spoken about how it can be sprinkled throughout the existing committees, or maybe fall under the curriculum district priority.
Athletics.
Excuse me?
Athletics.
Athletics, which used to be a board committee and became a building committee because James Cannon was so involved in it. And that's, it's usually just a couple of times a year. Maybe it'll expand due to the district priorities.
There's only some board committees where community members can't serve because of law, right? But, so, but building committees are a different thing. Community members are welcome to serve on the education committee, which is really a curriculum committee.
And then communication, lots of communication committees.
And then we're gonna have the priorities fold within these committees, correct?
Well, almost maybe changing the committee charges and names, so that it would be a communication committee.
Right.
A curriculum committee with environmental, technology, and that.
So restructuring committee?
Restructuring. We don't have it fully restructured, but this is actually very exciting, because this is the first time I've been a part of that. They've been the same charges since the, since I've been here and probably before.
You gotta look out for standing committees, that's the deal.
They're typically laid out, parents can sign up at the open houses, which is obviously tomorrow night. Are you, are you, are you going to do that?
Yes, and we'll send out an alert too. I think sometimes it works, sometimes parents can't sign there, sometimes it's the only time. So we need to, we need to promote it a little bit more, because it's, you know, the more at the table, the more minds at the table, the more powerful we are.
Alright, I think we've concluded the discussion. Let's move to action items, item seven here. A, adopting a special resolution. Wanna read that resolution?
Sure, I'm reading it.
I think you are.
Alright. Whereas the Garrison Union Free School District pledges to be a welcoming community for all. It supports and serves the students and families of Garrison and Putnam Valley regardless of their background. And whereas we commit to helping promote our core American value that no one should be targeted because of their racial, ethnic, immigration, or refugee status, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or other social identities. And whereas, as public servants, we have an even greater responsibility to speak out against discrimination, xenophobia, and hatred. Because when the unacceptable becomes the norm in our society, human rights for all are threatened. And whereas, we recognize that at every level of American society, people of all backgrounds contribute to our democracy, culture, and economy, and we will work to inspire a positive perception of all people and engage individuals to help build a greater capacity for understanding others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District, County of Putnam, State of New York, that the Garrison Union Free School District pledges to be a place that respects our differences and believes that diverse perspectives create better outcomes, and agrees to support and serve all of its residents and families regardless of their background, and further encourages all staff and students of the Garrison Union Free School District to uphold this pledge.
Okay, we need a motion?
I move to adopt.
No, second.
Be resolved that the board, do we need a vote now or later?
No.
Okay. All, all in favor of adopting the special resolution as laid out? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? And the ayes have it. Dooley adopted. Thank you, Courtney, for the...
Jill.
And Jill.
Put in a huge amount of work on that.
Terrific. Okay, approve planning, policy committee charges, membership, and schedule of meetings. Need a motion here?
So moved.
Second.
Be resolved, the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District approves the planning, policy committee charges, membership, schedule, and meetings as laid out. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes? The ayes have it. Item C, adopt the board policies.
So moved.
Okay. You wanna read this one?
Okay. Motion made by Courtney and a second...
By James.
By James. And duly adopted.
Teacher.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Did you wanna say anything about this real quick?
No, actually, it's been there, just waiting for her to obtain her certification, so she was here last year.
Chigoy.
Chigoy.
Whereas the district is in need of a certified Spanish teacher, and whereas Jennifer Chigoy has served in this position as a long-term substitute for part of the eighteen nineteen school year, and whereas the board would like to continue to employ Ms. Chigoy in this capacity for the nineteen twenty school year, subject to her obtaining certification in Spanish, and whereas the board desires to credit Ms. Chigoy with some of her time served as a long-term substitute during the eighteen nineteen school year. Therefore, the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District approves the appointment and continued deployment of Jennifer Chigoy as a long-term substitute Spanish teacher from August twenty-eighth through December three, two thousand nineteen. Ms. Chigoy will be paid at the rate of one hundred and fifty dollars per day from the first day of employment, crediting her with twenty days of service during the eighteen nineteen school year. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? And the ayes have it. Approve appointment of English as a new language teacher.
Oh, my gosh.
Second?
Seconded.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation of superintendent to appoint Megan O'Brien...
Palise?
Palise to a probationary term of four years as a teacher of English as new language, ENL, in the English as second language tenure area, commencing on August eighteenth, twenty nineteen, ending on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, contingent upon compliance with the requirements in the educational law. Ms. O'Brien Palise will be assigned for a majority of her time in ENL in the ESL tenure area, but may be assigned one class of incidental teaching outside or in New York's state certification in English to the speakers of other language, if needed. The salary of this position will be based on the MA Step Two level of the Garrison Teachers Association salary schedule.
Question, how, how much of a need is there for, for that service?
For ENL, we have four students right now, and based on the NICE SLAT scores, that determines how many minutes students need to receive services and minutes. And they can range from a hundred and eighty to three hundred and sixty. So that's how we, with four students, it requires about four periods. It equals four periods, or five periods.
These are four not English speaking students.
Well...
English as a new language.
And then, okay, so...
So that incidental piece?
You wanna talk?
So, that incidental piece, that's for all teachers. They can teach up to five periods per week outside of their certification. So that's what we do for, for our teachers who teach health, who teach family and health and consumer science. And that, and sometimes there is a need of when section, there are more sections that a teacher can absorb. So in science this year, we have two sections of sixth grade, and so that exceeds the contractual periods for that middle school science teacher. So in the past, we've asked teachers to take on that incidental. With Megan, with this, with this teacher Megan, she is certified in science, so it's a nice match. And we have been able to, in the schedule, embed a team teaching approach, so that the middle school science teacher and our new ENL, our ENL teacher, science teacher, can work together during two periods. So sometimes one teacher will be there, and other times they'll be team teaching and working with each other. It's a very nice model, so that the sixth graders will be able to experience both teachers, their styles and approaches.
Alright, so to summarize, we have an ENL need, and then we also happen to have a science section that needs to be covered. When you add those positions together, it becomes a full-time position. Tenurable?
Yep.
According to this. So, things could change, I guess, but, you know, we, that's the situation.
And she taught the ENL in the past as well.
Yeah, she was here last year, okay.
What happens in two years, let's say, when, when, if there isn't a need for the, for ENL, the ENL teacher, and there isn't a need for a level science?
What would happen if the programmatic need shifts? Let's say, in the case of, can I rephrase that?
Please.
In the case, in the case of a programmatic need changing, what happens to a position in such circumstances?
It's decreased.
Theoretically.
It's decreased or terminated.
Okay, so there's...
And we're always forthcoming with that. The hope is that they do test out of the NICE SLAT. That's their job, right? But then we have influx of students that do it.
Okay. So, right, in the meantime, we, we have a new member of the community? Full-time member of the community, and we have to vote on it, right? So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? And the ayes have it. Welcome Ms. O'Brien Palise, and the first order of business is to make sure we pronounce her name correctly.
She goes by Megan O'Brien.
OC's? Megan O'Brien, excellent. OC's. Alright, next on the agenda, public comment. We encourage the public to speak openly and voice concerns. Please know that any person wishing to speak during this time shall comply with all provisions of the Garrison Union Free School District policy on public comment. We remind you to keep your comments to three minutes, and to conduct yourself in a respectful manner. Address district matters only and your experience with the school. We ask that you refrain from addressing topics related to personnel or individual students other than your own. Such concerns should be discussed privately with the superintendent or appropriate administrator. Let's rephrase that a little bit, words move that. Any other concerns, right? The board is here to listen, but will not be providing immediate feedback or engaging in open dialogue. We ask that you seek, seek the form that best suits your concerns and contributes to productive dialogue. It might be this one, it might be others. Any necessary follow-up will be noted and provided through the appropriate channel. Members of the public wishing to comment, please sign, sign in with the district clerk and step to the microphone and identify yourself.
No takers?
Yep.
Only the second ayes will.
Noted, Jesse. Alright.
Yeah. I'll come straight up.
Oh, that's a quick one. Sorry, can't wait to watch that easy.
Hi there, I'm Lisa Rasek, mother to two children, now fourth grader, a sixth grader. I have a comment, or just some consideration regarding term limits, since it did come up for a topic tonight. In my experience of these past few years, the board seats, or the vacancies, have not actually been all that hotly contested, as far as I could see. Thankfully, we've ended up with excellent talent on our board despite this. But it would make me concerned about enforcing or forcing term limits for the chairman, or, I'm sorry, the presidency. So I'd just like that to be taken into consideration. Also, I'm just thinking that if, as always, it's, I think that you're all very out to do. Being a smaller district, smaller community, may also mean that we just don't have enough interest or talent to accommodate or these type of, to fill these types of positions. And I would hate to lose institutional knowledge, actual knowledge and ability because we've enforced a certain, you know, maybe the inappropriate number of years, or set in place an inappropriate number of years. That's it.
We're not supposed to be opening dialogue.
I know, I just wanna clarify.
We can clarify.
I can clarify during board member comment.
Board member comment. Any other public comment? Public? Would you like to clarify?
I just, I'd like to make a board member comment, clarifying our earlier discussion regarding board term limits. I think what we were discussing is the, a limit to how long a board member serves as president, but not, not limiting how long they can be on the board. So a board president can then move to any other seat.
So, what Houdane does is they elect the president, president serves as president, and then a few years, they go back to the board. They're no longer president, but they serve on the board, if they wanna continue serving. So the idea here would be to sort of rotate the responsibilities, but not necessarily, once you're done being a president, go out to pasture. You know, it's not... And actually, I think that might be helpful, you know, so, okay. We're supposed to follow the policy, right? Not get into open dialogue.
Yep. Yep. No, we're in board member comment.
Board member comment. David, you have any comments?
Well, I guess, since it's the second day of school.
Right.
I'd be curious to know if there are any curricular or extracurricular activities that are new this year that we didn't have last year. And in particular, I know there was some talk last year about a debate club, which, you know, I've been interested in seeing for a couple of years. Is there a plan to have a debate club this year for middle school?
Chris Caliendo's really one that has shown interest, and so I haven't spoken, I haven't spoken to him about that, so, but that's the intent. I know he's very excited about it. He piloted it last year. I think he would like to grow it.
And your comment is that you would love to see a, you know, debate club?
Oh, I would like to.
And you would love to see an update on how we're engaging the concept, as well as maybe the evolution of the club?
Yeah, and, and, but, and then just work back in particular, but, and would be great to hear a report on that next, at the next meeting, just to get a status report on it. But if there are any other curricular innovations or, or club innovations that we didn't have last year, I just wanted to know that.
Yeah. I know that the social emotional, there's been some folks who just went through some responsive classroom training, and I think that their presentation is that going to be in January. They'll talk about what they've learned, and what I'm looking forward to is they spent, they went through a big professional development on responsive classroom. I'm looking forward to how it's worked, looking forward to hearing how it's working in the classroom, and the differences between last year's engagement and this year's engagement with these new tools, you know? And I'm looking forward to that, so. Any other board comment? We're done. Okay. Being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District adjourns regular meeting of September 4, 2019. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. The board now retreats to Mr. Caliendo's room to retreat. And we thank him.